And somehow, the 24th was no longer available, so the first was assigned. And I'd like to ask for continuance to the next available date. Also, I have reason to believe that we're reasonably close to an agreement, so we can avoid DR, so with a little extra time, I think we might be able to do that.
So, October 8th?
8th.
All right.
Does the 8th work for you?
Yeah, the 8th would be fine, yeah.
Okay, I think that the Commission can likely accommodate that.
Commissioners, I need to, and I apologize with all the excitement this evening, need to recuse myself from this item that's proposed for continuance number three. As it's adjacent to a property that I have partial ownership in.
Okay.
Motion to recuse President Fong.
Second.
On that motion to recuse President Fong from item three, Commissioner Antonini, Commissioner Hillis, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Richards, Commissioner Wu, and Commissioner President Fong.
Oh.
Oh, he's gone away, all right.
He's released.
So, so moved, Commissioners.
Okay, we'll take that item up soon.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further public comment on the continuance calendar?
Continuance, wow.
It's been a long day. Sue Huster, I'm here to request that you continue number seven until the date you have chosen for number five, which is October 15th. Can I have the overhead, please? You will notice that they're the same issue. We are using the five-foot height as an...
Sue, are you asking for item seven to be continued?
I'm asking for seven to be continued to the same date as item five, which is to October 15th.
Well, we should take up that matter when the item's actually called. We haven't even called that matter yet.
So, I have to wait until midnight for that?
Well, depends on when we get to it, unless the Commissioners want to discuss it.
It's equivalent of your, it's equivalent now of 10:45 of, in terms of a meeting. I've been here since noon.
Okay.
So, I'm just telling, I am telling you right now, audience, that you can't do the five footers except together, because once one is issued, there are five more coming, and you have one on October 15th. It's a Southam Market case. Southam Market is wiping out the people of Southam Market. You've had a lot of that today.
We'll take it up at the item.
So, I will wait until midnight.
We, we have heard you, so I think we have heard your request.
My name's Jamie Whitaker, I live in the Rincon Hill neighborhood, and I would like to make the same request. The promise is made to the community...
We're gonna stick to the, we're gonna stick to the continuance calendar. I know everyone's tired.
We've finally called items one, two, three, four, and five at this time.
We'll hang out.
Good evening, my name is Jean-Pierre Guitard. I'm the owner of the property at 2829-31 Baker Street. I would like to respectfully request that we just stick to the agenda, which is to continue till, I believe it's October 1st. This project has been discussed for 20 months. In other words, our first meeting with our community, our neighbors, was 20 months ago. I really think it's unfair to have any more continuances. I have to disagree with Mr. Triggs's remark that there's any further accommodation that's going to be reached, that a continuance, further continuance would serve any purpose. We've made huge accommodations already, just to get to this point, and we don't see any further changes coming. And staff has made pretty clear what its thoughts are on the approvability of this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next public commenter.
Tony Riley's my name. I'm the co-sponsor for 2829 to 2839 Baker Street, number three on your list. I would like to respectfully keep with the proposed continuance for October 1st. We had our first application submitted to the Planning Department back in February of 2014. We made a number of concessions to our neighborhood groups and to the discretionary review filer. We were originally scheduled to be, you know, actually on the DR calendar before, but for workload reasons, it was pushed out. And I feel, I feel that there's really very little prospect of coming to an agreement. Based on the recommendations from the Planning Department, it does not rise to a level of unusual or extraordinary. And so, I would respectfully like to keep to the proposed continuance date of October 1st. Thank you.
Okay, is there additional comment on the continuance calendar? If there are additional commenters, please line up on the screen side of the room.
Hi, my name is Laura, I'm here with Grow SF. And I just want to say that every time you issue another continuance, you back up this pipeline even further, and you give more opportunities for these projects to be scaled back when we are in the middle of a housing crisis. So, I hope that you take into account the two arguments that have been made here about why they believe their project should move forward. It is your job to make decisions yes or no, and if there is no more discussion to be had, it's time for a decision to be made. Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no more public comment, it's closed. Commissioner Richards.
Can I ask the person who spoke on number three to request October 15th come back up?
It was October 8th.
They requested it October 8th. October 8th, please. I apologize, it's, we've been here eleven and a half hours. Could you repeat why you want a continuance of an additional week?
Yeah, I have a, I have an event, a school event where, which I'm hosting at my house on that day, that evening. I have 50 people coming to my house, and we've sent the invitations out and can't rescind them. And originally, when the two dates were offered, she gave us October 1st or the 24th, and both the project sponsor and I agreed to the 24th, that was fine. But then somehow, a week later, the planner rescinded that and gave us the 1st without consideration. I'm only asking for a week, that's, I'm not asking a delay for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I move to continue item one to September 24th, item two to September 24th, and item three to October 8th.
And four and five.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's more. Four, five A.
Four is the first.
Four to the first, five A is to the 15th, five B to the 15th, and five C to the 15th.
Second.
Very good, Commissioners, so there is a motion that has been seconded to continue all items as proposed, except item three to October 8th. On that motion, Commissioner Antonini, Commissioner Hillis, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Richards, and Commissioner Chair Wu.
Aye.
So moved, Commissioners, that motion passes unanimously six to zero. Commissioners, that will place us under your regular calendar on items six A and B for case numbers 2014 hyphen 001083CUA and VAR at 1042 through 1044 Jackson Street. You will consider conditional use authorization, and the zoning administrator will consider requests for variance.
Good evening, President Fong and members of the Commission, Carly Grove, Planning Department staff. The item before you is a request for conditional use authorization to permit an addition exceeding 40 feet in height at 1042-1044 Jackson, located within the RH3 zoning district and 65A Height and Bulk District. This item was initially scheduled on July 23rd, but was continued to this hearing so additional graphics could be provided to the Commissioners. The subject property is currently developed as a two-story over garage, two-unit residential building, and covers the entire 1,341 square foot lot. The subject lot is approximately 54 feet deep and 25 feet wide. The proposal is to construct a two-story vertical addition and to add one dwelling unit to the building, resulting in three total units. The proposed third story would cover the entire lot, and the proposed fourth story would be set back eight feet from the rear property line and six feet from the front property line. The project also includes interior reconfiguration of the two existing residential units and of the garage. Two additional parking spaces would be provided for a total of three spaces. The project sponsor is also seeking a rear yard variance to construct portions of the proposed additions within the required rear yard setback of 15 feet. To date, the department has received the following public comment. One phone call, 12 individual letters, and 75 signatures in support of the project, and letters from seven individuals, and two joint letters with approximately 50 signatures in opposition to the project. Several of the individuals who submitted individual letters also signed the joint letters of opposition, or reiterated their letters in multiple drafts to staff, which you have in your supplemental packet. The department recommends approval and believes that the project is necessary and desirable for the following reasons. The project would add one unit to an existing two-unit building, which is consistent with the prescribed density of the RH3 zoning district, and with the existing neighborhood character of multifamily residential buildings. The proposed addition is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood context of three-to-four story residential buildings, and the project sponsor has provided setbacks and has sculpted the building massing to protect light and air to neighboring residents. The subject property is well-served by transit, and the additional unit will not detrimentally impact transit capacity. The project also adds three bicycle parking spaces and two off-street vehicle parking spaces, which would help alleviate on-street parking congestion. The project meets all applicable requirements of the planning code and is desirable for and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Commissioners, Melinda Sargejapour with Ruben Genius and Rose. I'm here tonight on behalf of the project sponsors, Arcus Housing. I have with me Mark Topicure, who is the project architect, Ritu Vora, and Arjun Dut, who are from the project team. We're very excited to present this project. We're all available to answer any questions that you have after this. As Carly mentioned, the project itself is going to involve a seismic upgrade to the existing building, renovation and reconfiguration of the two existing units, which have been vacant since 2014. The building is two stories over a basement garage, and it's among the shortest buildings on this block along Jackson. The project will construct a two-story addition, which is going to bring the building to a total of four stories and a maximum height of 49 feet. That's consistent with the three-to-four story residential buildings seen throughout the neighborhood. This addition, as Carly mentioned, is also going to create a new four-bedroom dwelling unit, which is approximately 1,900 square feet in size and suitable for family occupancy. The fourth floor is going to be set back six feet from Jackson Street, additional eight feet from the rear property line, minimizing its appearance. Finally, the project's going to add two off-street parking spaces. This building is located in the 65A Height and Bulk District, which does allow development up to 65 feet. The project is only proposing 49, however, Planning Code Section 253 requires conditional use for any construction that occurs above 40 feet in height in an RH3 district. The project's also requesting a variance from rear yard requirements for the third floor and a portion of the fourth floor, which again, already includes some significant front and rear setbacks. The variance request, we believe, is justified by the substandard lot depth, which is only 53 feet here, while other lots nearby along Jackson are 70 feet or more along those lines. The sponsors have engaged in some proactive outreach efforts with their neighbors, and they've received a good deal of support, as reflected in the packet. Through that process, they have also received comments from neighbors and concerns regarding building massing. In the interest of responding to those comments and concerns, they have proposed some additional top-floor, fourth-level setbacks, which we'll be describing to you today in a little bit more detail. At this time, I'd like to ask our architect, Mark Topicure, to come up and discuss the project context and design and massing. Again, we're available for any questions that you have afterwards.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mark Topicure from Topicure Architecture. We, most recently, on September the 1st, had a meeting with some concerned neighbors, and they did express to me, I'm coming on board on the project, some of their concerns, primarily about height. There seemed to be a understanding that the height limit was 40 feet. In reality, it is 65 feet, as previously stated. We had taken some time to look at how the project fits in the neighborhood, and I do have something here for the overhead, if we could turn this on. The orange lots indicate properties that have non-conforming coverage, site coverage. So, there is a predominance of properties that are either 100% or have yards that are less than 10 feet in depth, from our estimates. And the yellow building, the yellow parcels indicate properties that have buildings that are higher than four stories. And the sort of yellow and orange hatched areas are properties that are both exceeding the lot coverage, as well as have buildings that are taller than, than four stories. Some noted at five stories. And you can see a pattern on Jackson Street. Our site is right here, the adjoining properties to the east and downhill, the four consecutive properties are all four stories or more. There is a larger building at 1060 Jackson Street on a wide lot that is four stories, and again, is higher than what everyone seems to be concerned about in the neighborhood. The other issue that we have taken a look at was doing some further redesign of the project, and on the top floor, the fourth floor, we have scaled back some of the massing along Auburn Street, which is the small alleyway that connects Pacific to Jackson Streets. We have some supplemental renderings that are not in your packet. You have some 3D renderings of the original design that built out to the full face of Auburn Street. This is a view looking up Jackson Street, which doesn't really reflect the changes that we're talking about on Auburn Street, but it does give you some sense of the pattern that's consistent with the rest of Jackson Street, of the stepped heights of buildings becoming higher as you move up the street. This is a view from the opposite direction on Jackson Street, looking towards the east, and the subject property is right here in the corner of Auburn and Jackson. And you're starting to see the third, the fourth floor, that has been pulled back approximately three feet from Auburn facade for a portion of the frontage on Auburn Street. There is a portion that we've pulled back only two feet in area. This is a view, a little bit better, looking at Auburn Street, and you can see that the fourth floor reseeds fairly nicely. We've tried to emphasize the horizontal and not make it, the massing, tried to soften the massing, as well as pulling back on the fourth street, I think helps considerably. And this is a view looking up Auburn Street with, again, the new massing pulling back three feet at both the front and rear portions. There's a middle portion that accommodates kitchen area that we needed a little more width, but only sets back two feet. We have also supplemented the design with some roof eve overhangs, again, to give some shadow and some interest, and try to, again, express the horizontality of the project. The original project had a lot of bulk, and we have tried to make some efforts to scale that back, so it's a little more in keeping with the neighborhood. Again, this is a shot that is in your packet, that kind of shows the rhythm of the even side of Jackson Street. And you can see our site right here, it is one of the lower buildings on that side of the street. So, by adding the two floors, we are only coming to a height of 49 feet, still well with under, under the 65-foot height limit by 16 feet. I'm doing the math right here in my head. On the plan view, in terms of what we're now proposing with some further setbacks, we have altered and cut about 6% of the square footage out of the fourth floor area. Pulling back, this is Auburn Street, we are setting back the first portion of the building on the fourth floor, three feet, and then there's a middle section that's approximately 16 to 17 feet in length, that sits back two feet. We're rather tight, because on the east side, we also have been setting back the building from the downhill property by three feet, so we're rather narrow at this portion. And then we do have outdoor deck areas at the front and rear portion. There's the eight-foot setback and the six-foot setback on the front. And then, finally, the issue regarding the variance for the rear yard setback, we are talking about a very small portion of the Auburn Street side that is visible here in this diagram. Excuse me for... The sort of yellow shaded area does indicate the area that would be in the required setback. The dash line shows where the 15-foot setback would be. This is the 65-foot height limit that's allowable, and of course, we're well under that. The yellow indicates the area that's, that's subject, that would be non-conforming, and the existing first and second floor is already, is there, and it is legal non-conforming use right now. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. Peter Berg, Christina Sanders, Gabriela Navarro, Michael Glossensky, Petra Campos, James Lang, Joe Yick, and Alexandria Yick. If you guys want to line up on that side of the room, kind of assemble yourselves in order, and we'll keep it flowing.
Can I see your plans for this project?
Good evening. My name is John Wilcox Black, and I have owned my condo at 1426 Taylor Street since 1998. My neighbors and I are here today to stand in opposition to the proposed project at 1042-44 Jackson Street. While we are pro-development and are supportive of adding much-needed moderately-priced housing stock to the neighborhood, we have numerous concerns with the development as it is being proposed. The bulk of our concerns have been outlined in a letter dated August 7th, and submitted to the Commissioners, the Planner, and the Secretary. To date, it has been signed by 52 neighbors who live in the immediate area. The developers, Ritu, Vora, and Arjun Dut, propose to add a two-story mega mansion penthouse that is in conflict with the neighborhood and will diminish access to light and air in the many neighbors in the immediate vicinity. We believe this is overreach and have sought to compromise, only to have repeatedly been met with resistance. We have outlined six areas of concern with the proposed project. First, we object to the building exceeding 40 feet. The portion of Jackson on which the subject property resides is RH3. Maintaining development within these parameters is particularly important, as the height is in excess of 40 feet, and it will cast Auburn Alley in shadow, greatly diminishing their access to light and air. Further, it will erode the neighborhood's well-curated topography by rising above the buildings on the upward slope and exceeding the heights of all the other buildings on the 1,000 block of Jackson Street. Secondly, the owners are proposing a four-story structure over a garage. This is entirely inconsistent with the structures on the street, which are generally two to three stories over a garage. Third and fourth, we are requesting a variance. The owners are requesting a variance at the rear yard setback and seek to make new additions to the rear yard setback. We understand that the existing structure is currently out of compliance, and the bulk and mass will be exacerbated with the addition of the proposed fourth story. Not only will the additional 2,000-plus square feet further block light and air to the residents of Auburn, but it will serve to codify an environment in which the exceptions to the code are readily granted. Fifth, eliminate the balconies that would protrude onto Auburn Street. The protrusion will conflict with above-ground PG&E equipment. And sixth, preserve the light to existing windows in the neighboring buildings. As property residents of this shared neighborhood, we understand the need for development, but we oppose renovations that solely benefit the owner at the expense of neighboring properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Petra Campos. I'm a long-term Nob Hill resident, and I've owned my place at 1426 Taylor since 2002. I want to thank the Commissioners for having us here today, especially after the long day that we just had, and I really appreciate you taking the time to discuss the proposed property development at Jackson Street with us. You will hear from us, my neighbors, tonight about our opposition to the project and our strong desire to work with you and Ms. Vora on a solution that meets the needs of this neighborhood. I've spoken with Ritu Vora directly, and I've attended a neighborhood meeting that was attended by her husband, Arjun Dut, and her new architect, Mark Topicure. Like my neighbors that you're gonna hear from in just a moment, I'm for development, and I would very much like to see the building cared for and enhanced, but I strongly believe that it needs to meet the planning code requirements set forth for an RH3 neighborhood, Street. These codes, they were put in place for a reason, and with very specific conditions for exemption. It's unlikely that any of us would be standing before you today if the developers had submitted plans for a 3U construction that is within the 40-foot limit for this neighborhood. As presented, Ms. Vora wants a four-star unit so that she can add about 2,000 square foot mega mansion with reefer on top of an existing two-unit building, or that's what we've been told. This, we, and, you know, we've had conversations with her, and again, I spoke with her, I asked her if she couldn't build within the 40 feet, and her response has been that it wouldn't be profitable, it won't be economically viable. I haven't purchased a new person for years, and yes, she did say that to me. She said costs are really high, her husband said, "They're significantly expensive, and we need the cost to amortize." I don't know why we, the neighbors, are responsible for ensuring that Ms. Vora turns a profit. I'm not an architect, and, but I honestly do have difficulties understanding why in this market, they can't add an 825 square foot, one-story unit that keeps them within the 40-foot limit and still be profitable. Again, it's not really probably your area concern or ours either, but their property, since they bought it last year in May of 2014, has seen probably about a $700,000 increase or a 59% valuation increase again. And so, you know, their concerns about profit and having to add a mega mansion are really curious in this environment. Most of all, I don't understand, and I'm galled, that they're using their desire for these massive profits to, to benefit themselves at the expense of the neighborhood. So, Ms. Vora, she's going to attempt to portray us as anti-development. That's not the case, we're actually very much for development, and we, our concerns are really comprehensive. We are very much concerned with light and air, especially on Auburn Alley, and the impact that's gonna have to the neighborhood along Auburn and Jackson Streets. The impact especially to the low and middle-income tenants who make this area their home, some who we believe have been wrongfully evicted, and in keeping the beauty and natural topography of our neighborhood. Ms. Vora's project benefits herself and her husband at the expense of the residents in the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, for giving my community the opportunity to voice their concerns about this project. My name is Mike Dolaszewski, and I rent a unit at 1426 Taylor Street. I oppose this request for conditional use and variance. I would like to start by thanking those members of the SF Bay Area Renters Federation, who in their written comments and petitions supporting this project, expressed the need for additional affordable housing in our city. My neighbors and I wholeheartedly agree. The subject property is located in a transitional zone between Nob Hill and Chinatown, a neighborhood that has traditionally been home to lower-income Chinese families, immigrants and immigrant labors. In fact, up until its recent sale, this property was occupied by low-income residents within that very demographic. We'd love to see this property redeveloped, but are curious as to how the addition of a two-story, 2,040-square-foot luxury penthouse wrapped in floor-to-ceiling windows within a neighborhood of low to moderate means can be considered affordable or even desirable. As proposed, the project is completely out of context with its surroundings, and will tower above every single building on Auburn Alley, casting a permanent shadow along an especially narrow, single-lane passageway that also serves as the front entrance for many homes. In fact, the proposed height would make this building even taller than some properties both across the alley and uphill from it, disrupting roof lines that generally follow to the topography of the hill. Perhaps this is why the sponsor has declined to provide the Commission with architectural renderings that would show the project in context with the surrounding neighborhood. Instead, the sponsor has provided a series of images and maps highlighting other, quote, "four-story" properties in the general vicinity. Over half of these examples, however, are zoned completely differently than the subject property, and have higher-as-of-right height limits. Also, with the exception of a single property on Taylor Street, all of the sponsor's examples are reported as three-story buildings, not four-story buildings, on the Planning Department's own property information website. The sponsor's own exhibit mistakes the facts and by itself undermines the sponsor's entire justification for conditional use. Commissioners, you... Commissioners, you have over 50 neighbors who have gone on record as stating that they would have no opposition to the sponsor adding a unit or otherwise increasing the height and bulk of this property, as long as they respect their parcel's long-established RH3 zoning and as-of-right height limits of 40 feet. This can hardly be considered anti-development. This sponsor can easily add an additional floor and an additional unit while keeping the building more in character with its surroundings. This compromise is wholly compatible with the city's desire and policy to create additional housing. The project as currently proposed is an overreach that is neither necessary or desired. By the sponsor's own admission, at our neighborhood meeting, this conditional use is being pursued mainly to ensure that the project is profitable, an objective that harms our neighbors and one which has no compelling interest. Based on these facts, I urge you to deny this conditional use. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Distinguished commissioners, my name is Gabriela Navarro, and I live at 884 Alabama Street. In their correspondence and testimony, Mr. Dutta and Ms. Vora would have you believe that they are simple, unsophisticated people, novices who have never undertaken a project of this scale and who are simply looking to build a home. Do not be deceived. These are shrewd and intelligent operators who have purchased and developed multiple properties across the city, leaving a trail of unlawful eviction lawsuits and displaced families in their wake. They've misrepresented themselves to numerous city officials, including this commission, the city's rent board, and law enforcement officials. These developers have an established pattern of purchasing properties inhabited by tenants of low social economic means and forcibly removing them through the use of threats, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. I know this firsthand, as I am a resident of a building that Mr. Dutta and Ms. Vora have attempted to purchase. Even without owning the title to the building before it was even sold, Ms. Vora intimidated and threatened my neighbors, scaring one family of three so badly that they elected to move into their car. Sadly, their tactics have been highly effective, and most of my neighbors, monolingual immigrants, including a young, single mother to a toddler, have elected to leave rather than live in a constant state of fear. There is no doubt that San Francisco needs housing. That said, there are plenty of honest developers who are willing to balance people with profit and who are more deserving of the preliminary discretion that this commission wields. I will admit that this project will have little impact on my life, but Mr. Dutta and Ms. Vora most certainly have had an impact, and they will continue to disrupt the lives of others. I urge the commission to not reward or otherwise incent these developers by using your discretion to approve this conditional use. This project is not necessary, and if history is any indicator, it may have already resulted in the displacement of a protected family that was listed as living in this property prior to the sale but whom can no longer be found. This is not the kind of profit-motivated growth that the San Francisco Planning Commission should endorse. Based on today's attendance, it's clear that these developers are not in harmony with their neighborhood, their neighbors, or the San Francisco resident community. Thank you.
My name is Guillermo Candesso. I have lived at 1052 Jackson Street for 19 years. It has been an honor to be welcomed to and lived on a block that bridges two very important neighborhoods to me personally and to the city. That's Nob Hill and Chinatown. For 10 years, I have worked for a social welfare organization that does local grassroots environmental work. I am speaking on behalf of five tenants and the building owner, Chinatown optometrist, Dr. Alfred T. Lee. We are located directly across the narrow Auburn Alley from the proposed project. None of the three apartments have views over the current 24-foot structure in my building and no flat roof to get any views. However, we can all see the sky from the current structure without craning our necks. Four days ago, the sun shone into my second-floor apartment from about 7:30 in the morning against the walls and to about 11:30 when the beam's only shone down on the window sills. These are four precious hours in the morning where all the rooms along the house are lit up. At about 10:30, the sun is at the position of about...that would crest the top of a 40-foot building. This would have reduced our direct sunlight across the apartment from four hours to one hour that day. The upstairs apartment would benefit from more lighting during this time, but the apartment below us would likely have no direct sunlight. Building up to 40 feet is well within the developer's right. If this building were at 50 feet, my floor, the second floor, would be lucky to get 30 minutes of direct sunlight. The apartment above would get an hour of direct sunlight, and the apartment below probably would not receive any direct sunlight at all. I will have to crane my neck to see the sky over a 40-foot structure. If that structure were at 50 feet, I would likely have to put my head out the window in order to see any type of sky. The proposed project at 12...the proposed project, 1218 Auburn, would likely not enjoy the same amount of light that's reflected off of the building, of our building, as Auburn Alley is too narrow. The developers have demonstrated no interest in doing a shadow study for the surrounding area, but did do one for a park two blocks away. A 40-foot structure, let alone a 50-foot structure, would tower over existing surrounding structures. The tallest roofs from the south end to the north end don't actually drop in elevation. I don't know if you can see that. They claim that the rooftops, or the taller buildings, are taller than them, but actually the rooftops pretty much all line up within a feet or two. In the winter, when the sun is low in the sky in the south, the sun is...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you. I don't want this monolith right across the street from me in this narrow alley. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
My name is Richard Leon. I live at 18 Auburn Alley. My family moved there two years ago, but my wife and I actually grew up in this area. I'm one of the 50 neighbors who signed a joint petition opposing the project, and I strongly support the six points in that petition. Let's talk about the adverse effects of the 50-feet height under the CU. In the morning, Auburn is lit by the sun coming over the east-side buildings and reflecting off the west-side buildings. Currently, around 8:00 AM, the existing building at 1042 Jackson throws a shadow halfway up the building across the alley. Now, the 50-foot is twice the height of the existing building. That's going to throw a shadow all the way up the building across the alley at the same time, 8:00 AM. Now, Auburn is a narrow alley. It receives a fairly limited amount of direct sunshine, and the 50-foot height is going to reduce that thing down to maybe a couple hours around noon. And my entrance in my bedrooms face Auburn, and they will become a lot darker. Currently, my light well and my skylight are well-lit by the afternoon sun because the neighborhood skylight, neighborhood roofline follows the slope of the street. And so, the interior of my upper unit is brightly lit well into the late afternoon hours. Now, this 50-foot height is going to disturb that roofline. Right now, at about 2:00 PM, the existing structure, which is about six foot higher than the adjacent structure, throws a shadow about halfway, almost halfway to my roof. Now, a 50-foot building is going to be 25 feet above my roof. Now, that's four times the height that's already throwing a shadow halfway to my roof. So about the same time, 2:00 PM, that thing is going to throw a shadow across my whole roof, and the light that's...and the time that my unit is well-lit by the sun is going to decrease by several hours. The 50-foot height is overreaching, undesirable, and unnecessary. Likewise, the setback variance also creates bigger matches blocking the sun. The owners and architect has also alluded to adding an elevator and a roof deck above that 50-foot level. Now, that's going to add, what, 14, 20 feet? That's going to make the problem even worse. And right now, the new drawings, which didn't usually show it, now show the 65-foot limit, height limit. That raises suspicion.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Okay. The CU and variance should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Pauline Javier. I own 1060 Jackson Street, two buildings up the block from the 1042/1044 Jackson Street project. I've lived at this residence for 29 years and in the neighborhood for 35 years, and I'd like to correct the statement of the sponsor's architect. 1060 Jackson Street is three stories over below grade garage. The project proposes to add two floors to a non-conforming residential structure located at the corner of Jackson Street and Auburn Alley across from the cable car barn. In addition to the conditional use requested due to its height, a rear yard variance is also being requested to reduce the rear yard requirement. This conditional use application fails to meet the planning commission's criteria. Number one, it is not necessary or desirable to the neighborhood because the proposed project overreaches and does not follow the rooflines along Jackson Street and Auburn Alley. Number two, the extensive shadow of the additional two floors will have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. And number three, the use does not comply with the San Francisco general plan because the additional two floors over the 40-foot height limit do not protect, preserve, or enhance the desirable quality and unique character of the neighborhood or the city. This variance application fails to meet Planning Code Section 305(c) criteria, which are required for the zoning administrator to grant variance. Number one, there are no exceptional or extraordinary circumstances applying to the property involved that apply to other properties in the neighborhood. Number two, the enforcement of specified provisions of this code would not result in difficulty or unnecessary hardship for the applicant. Number three, this variance is not necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right of the subject property. Number four, the granting of the variance will be detrimental to the public welfare. And number five, the granting of the variance will not be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this code and will adversely affect the San Francisco general plan because reduction in the rear yard requirement does not provide adequate open space for the neighborhood or the city. I, along with my neighbors in the immediate area of the project, strenuously oppose the project as currently proposed. We respectfully request that the planning commission eliminate one floor from the project addition and require a code-compliant rear yard, and that the zoning administrator deny the rear yard variance request. Thank you for your time.
My name is Christine Saunders, and I live on Taylor Street between Pacific and Jackson. My family and I have lived in San Francisco since 2001. I attended law school here at UC Hastings, and I'm currently a district attorney in another county. The project sponsors bear the burden of presenting facts to justify your approval of their requests. Unfortunately, this commission must view with the utmost skepticism any justifications put forth to it by these project sponsors due to a repeated pervasive history of misrepresentations to this city and commission that is documented in the media, city filings, and the very documents that you have in front of you today. Here are just a few examples. The Duts purchased 240 Missouri Street in February of 2012. After a year of harassing the rent-controlled tenants and trying to pressure them out, they evicted those tenants in October of 2013 on the basis of an owner move-in. According to the eviction notice filed with the city that you have before you today, the Duts are required to live at that address through September of 2016. By their own admission to their new neighbors, they have never lived at that address. Rather, that building is currently undergoing a massive expansion that includes the addition of two floors and a roof deck. Despite apparently being required to live at 240 Missouri Street, the Duts actually live at 1157 Church Street. Now, why is that address significant? Because in Stan Heller versus Can Do Capital, a lawsuit the Duts settled this year, the protected elderly tenants of 1157 Church Street alleged in court documents that the Duts intentionally misrepresented the scope of capital improvements to the city, resulting in the tenants' permanent displacement without compensation. The building remained under construction for one and a half years despite an administrative law judge denying the Duts three requests for extensions of time. In fact, they began construction on that project just 11 days after issuing a 60-day notice to vacate on the protected tenants, causing a portion of the ceiling to fall and the back staircase to collapse while the tenants still lived there. The Duts are currently being sued in Soto versus Vora for allegedly calling the police and falsely reporting that their monolingual, Spanish-speaking tenants were trespassing and asking the police to arrest them in order to force them out. That case is set for trial. We believe this disturbing pattern of evictions occurred in the building at issue here today. The MLS listings indicated protected tenants lived there. My neighbors will tell you that protected Chinese families that were protected tenants lived at the building at the time of the close of sale. The Duts told us that nobody lived there when the sale closed. This type of predatory behavior by developers should not be rewarded or condoned. I urge you to review the packet of commission of information I've submitted to you today containing documented evidence of what I've discussed and respectfully request you deny this petition.
Thank you.
Distinguished commissioners, my name is James Lang, and I'm here to express my opposition to the project as proposed at 1042 Jackson Street. My wife and I are long-term top-floor residents of the building directly to the east of the proposed structure, and we actually looked at purchasing the project site. And like Christine just said, I can attest that when I looked at it, we were warned that they were protected tenants. I met them. They're four generations of family. I saw them moving out right after close, so that's not a fact that can be debated. While my objections to this project are multitudinous, my primary concern is that if approved, my building and unit will lose 100% of access to sunlight due to the fact that the proposed building's wall has no setback from the property line, and its height extends far above that of all buildings to its east, west, and north. Because my building shares a wall with 1042 Jackson Street, my unit will only access light through the south-facing window lining Jackson Street. All other windows in my unit, with the exception of the aforementioned south-facing window, face west towards the proposed structure. If this building's height is extended beyond its current height and/or beyond 40 feet and there's no setback requirement, the light currently coming through my windows will be completely blacked out by a wall. This is unacceptable and unnecessary. The complete lack of a setback from the street and rear buildings or side buildings also creates a significant drainage issue because the building will cover nearly, or not nearly 100, 100% of the lot, leaving no permeable land. The need for permeable land and access to light are some of the many reasons the code requires setbacks from neighboring structures. We have tried to discuss these very important concerns with the project sponsor. Unfortunately, they've been uncompromising in their positions as they seek to build a structure that towers over all others in the neighborhood. This is simply unsupportable and should not be approved by this commission. Other buildings in the area have respected the height limitations and setbacks set forth in the code. The height and bulk of this proposed structure is totally out of scale with the neighborhood, and as you can see from the photos submitted by the neighbors, every building on Auburn Street is approximately the same height. If this structure is approved, all morning to mid-afternoon light that shines on Auburn will effectively be eliminated, and as I noted, there were protected tenants at move-in. Thank you for your time. I do want to reiterate that the document that the architect showed representing all the buildings as four- and five-story buildings was false. Mine was represented as five or four stories, and I live on the third floor, and I'm on the top floor. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Yick.
Will you speak up, please?
I live at 1060 Jackson Street. My family has built this building back in 1930s. I've been born and raised there since 1947. I got, for the record, it's a three-level above-a-sublevel garage. Got to learn how to count. I want to let you know that I built and remodeled this building. I did it without any conditional use or any variance. I complied with all the setbacks, and I think that these people should have to comply with the same. I could care less about the size of the lot. The height is another issue. You keep on telling me that I'm higher than everyone else. Take a look at the picture. I'm level with it. Everyone else is tapered. I think this building, if you're familiar with a Morris toe, that's what this building is. It's a Morris toe. It just sticks out. It just sticks out. And I'm going to tell you, Jackson Street, I'm a thirty-degree grade, and this building is built and developed, it'll be higher than my building, and everyone else on the back and the side, in front of them, everywhere. I don't understand the developers. They keep on telling me there's a, an elevator. I don't see that. Why are they hiding all this? What's the purpose of deception? Why can't they be forthwith and be honest about this? I mean, where's the truth in all this? And I've got to tell you, San Francisco is known for seven hills. Are we going to change all these hills? Are we going to lump them all into one? We're going to level them off so there are no hills? What are we doing here? Seven hills? We're going to change Bernal Heights? Telegraph Hill? Russian Hill? Nob Hill? We're going to level them all off so they look the same? Or we're going to have the character of San Francisco? Seven hills? And they're all been tapered. No one's afraid of development. I developed, but I conformed with the neighborhood. I asked the neighbors. I complied with their wishes, neighbors and neighborhood. We've all got to get along together. These people, they don't give a damn, actually, about any of this. All they care about is their money. They're going to come, they're going to develop, and they're going to leave the premise, and they could care less about what they left. Someone's got to pick up after the garbage, and we've got to deal with it for the rest of our lives that we live. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Sally Leon. I'm here on behalf, I'm here to present a video on behalf of Anna Stuntz of fourteen thirty-six Taylor Street. She's not here because of the medical reasons. I have a transcript of the video.
If you put the microphone close to the speaker, that's the one. There you go.
I'm going to talk to two things, but I heartily endorse the comments and concerns of my friends and neighbors who are speaking today and who have sent letters to me. I was living in the neighborhood in nineteen sixty-four, over fifty years ago. That apartment still had many buildings of its good old background. There were still counters, warehouses, light, and the South of Market. The city was changing, often of its nature and its vibe. To a great extent, that vibe has been rested upon its huge diversity, socio-economically, racially. In recent years, we have lost families, artists, racial diversity. No longer can teachers, families, police, artists, families afford to live in San Francisco. Vibrancy in San Francisco is being replaced by integrated, and socio-economically vibrant My second point is that the citizens voted in the zoning and height limitations to stop the excesses of the alley-oa of years when the Manhattanization of San Francisco was the goal. We, the citizens, we vetoed that vision and said we wanted to maintain the scenic rolling hills of San Francisco. This is still a stated goal of the Planning Commission. Any request for height changes north of Washington Street should be given the utmost scrutiny because south of Washington, the scenic rolling hills have already been obscured by prior development. Please vote no on the conditional use application. Maintain the vibrant neighborhood.
Okay, I'm afraid time's up on that. Next speaker, please.
My name is Joe Yick. I live at ten sixty Jackson Street, two buildings up the block from ten forty-two, ten forty-four Jackson Street. I've lived at this residence since nineteen ninety-one. Thank you, Commissioners Moore and Antonini, for your onsite visit to Jackson Street. From the street level and from the adjacent ten forty Jackson Street rooftop, we could see that the additional two floors and potential rooftop terrace would be overreaching for the adjacent buildings and surrounding neighborhood. The proposed project would not follow the natural step-shaped slope of the hill as other buildings on both Jackson Street and Auburn Alley do. I think that the proposed plans of the conditional use and variance sets a dangerous precedent for the neighborhood, and I oppose the applicant's plans to add bulk to one of the highest-density areas in San Francisco. And lastly, I think the residencies of the individuals speaking, speaking, and those who have sent letters and signatures should be taken into account and weighted accordingly because I believe that there are many advocating on behalf of the project who do not have a legitimate interest in the issue at hand, given that they do not live either adjacent to the project or on the same block or even in the same neighborhood, and are therefore not directly affected or relevant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alexandra Yick. For twenty-six years, I've lived at ten sixty-two Jackson Street, two buildings up from the development in question. I'm here today to object to the proposed project on the grounds that, one, it does not conform to San Francisco's planning and zoning codes, and, two, it negatively impacts livability conditions for surrounding neighbors. Now, my family has lived in Chinatown for five generations, and we've witnessed that when developers in Chinatown and Nob Hill have not conformed to planning and zoning codes, residents are faced with higher densities, less open space, greater shadowing, and less privacy. And this is exactly what this proposed development stands to do. This proposed project would exacerbate livability conditions of surrounding neighbors through its extensive expansion. The existing building is non-conforming as a corner building that occupies the entire lot with no rear yard. The new addition will be much higher, have greater site coverage, further reduces open areas to adjacent buildings, and towers over the narrow Auburn Alley. The proposed variance further expands the non-conforming nature of the property by not providing a code-compliant rear yard. Substituting a roof in place of a legitimate rear yard adversely impacts neighbors because it eliminates the mandatory open space. Additionally, should the developer add stair and elevator access to the roof, based on Department of Building Inspection Code requirements, these penthouses could create structures above the roof that would cover another one-third of the roof area and rise an additional twenty feet. The proposal offers no redeeming contribution to the neighborhood that would offset its lack of compliance and its negative impact to surrounding residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joanna Wu Kim, and I'm replaying a video on behalf of my father, Ronald Wu.
Honorable Commissioners, my name is Ronald Wu. I really wanted to speak in front of you today. Unfortunately, I'm unable to do so because I'm in Hong Kong attending to family business matters. So I'm speaking to you using video technology. My wife, Lillian, my daughter Joanna, and I are owners of ten thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty Jackson Street, a six-unit apartment building with next-door neighbors to the project. I've been a resident and property owner of San Francisco since nineteen sixty-one, from Chinatown to Nob Hill to Telegraph Hill and North Beach. The first time I arrived San Francisco in nineteen sixty-one, I lived near the Chinatown YMCA on Sacramento and Wayfully. Now I'm living in the peninsula. My daughter Joanna was born in the Children's Hospital of San Francisco in Laurel Heights, now the California Pacific Medical Center. As good neighbors, we wholeheartedly support new developments next door. This project is at the corner of Jackson and Auburn. Jackson Street is a busy uphill cable car route. This project is directly across the street from the entrance to the cable car barn. The cable car barn is the shelter and maintenance shop for all cable cars. There are currently about forty cable cars in operation in San Francisco. In the morning, this cable car will leave the barn for the streets. In the evening, they will return to the barn from the streets. Auburn Street is a small, narrow residential alley between Jackson and Pacific, so the corner of Jackson and Auburn is a very busy corner most of the time. As the next-door neighbors, we strongly object to the height and the bulk of the project. The project as it proposed is too tall and too big for this neighborhood. It is not consistent with the characters of the neighborhood. It is not in harmony with the neighborhood buildings. We will withdraw our objections if our neighbor will limit the building heights to forty feet and also...
Okay, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Neelam Afshari, and I live and own Unit One at fourteen twenty-six Taylor Street, a property directly affected by the ten forty-two Jackson Street project. One of the two questions before you today, well, tonight, is not whether to allow a project that adds an additional unit to the city's housing supply, nor is it whether to allow a building to improve itself in its neighborhood. The question and the standard which the commission must decide is whether the proposed use or feature, at the size and intensity contemplated and at the proposed location, will provide a development that is necessary or desirable for and compatible with the neighborhood or the community. That's the question on the conditional use. The standard is cited in the packet as one of the bases for the recommendation, yet no evidence is cited, nor are these conditions met. I did hear the planner mention this evening. It sounded like the conclusion was assumed. Either that, or it was the additional unit that was the need. What I'd like to say, though, is the need isn't met. Building above forty feet isn't necessary for the project or the neighborhood. The project can build an additional unit and improve the building significantly without going above forty feet. Based on the architectural renderings, which show floor-to-ceiling windows on the northern, eastern, and southern facades, it's clear that the very reason this applicant seeks the extra height is to capture, enjoy, and monetize sweeping views of the city, the Bay, and Coit Tower. Who wouldn't want to see those views? But as the commission is well aware, capturing views is not a policy objective nor in the public interest, and I think we can certainly agree that it's not necessary. Second, building above forty feet isn't desirable for or compatible with the neighborhood. Fifty-two neighbors, fifty-two neighbors, and I mean neighbors, on one petition alone say that the project as currently contemplated isn't desirable for or compatible with the neighborhood. The project, in fact, will cast a negative shadow, literally and figuratively, on the neighborhood. We understand that the city must continue to add housing to the current supply and that this commission is faced with the task of approving projects that support this goal but in a reasonable way and has the discretionary power to do so. But this project isn't reasonable. It's an overreach and represents an unneighborly approach to the development. I ask the commission to deny the request for the C.U.A. because it doesn't meet the standard for approval. The project should simply continue by right up to forty feet. Using your discretionary power to say no in this case will be the right outcome for this particular project and your goal overall in the city. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much for your attention in light of the long day you've had. My name is Peter Berg, and I live at Taylor Street, just around the corner from this proposal. I've lived in the neighborhood for thirteen years, the last two as a homeowner. You've been presented with a lot of information, including some very misleading diagrams by the sponsors, but a lot of information about the developer's background as well. I'd like to take a brief step back and suggest that there is a quite a reasonable compromise available and a mutually beneficial solution that we can drive towards. Instead of this luxury penthouse that would cast shadows on the neighbors and tower over all surrounding buildings, if they scaled back the plans just slightly to add a single floor, we can add all of the following benefits. Additional housing capacity, which I and my co-signatories on the petition wholeheartedly support. Improved aesthetics and structural integrity of the building. Preservation of the current neighborhood character, including the rolling hill topography. Minimal impact on light, privacy, and livability for Auburn residents, not zero impact, but minimal. And while this whole thing can be achieved while remaining fully compliant with current planning and zoning guidelines. This solution actually ticks all the boxes. It's kind of a no-brainer. Developers' architect conceded that a code-compliant third floor would add at least eight-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet of additional space while staying under forty feet and preserving setbacks. That is enough for a standalone third apartment, or if the, you can add an additional floor to the existing upper unit, which would give the developers this two-story penthouse they seem so intent on achieving. We've suggested these options and more, but we've met with reactions ranging from indifference to outright hostility from these developers. In fact, the developer's first architect, Ross Levy, quit in protest, citing the developer's own behavior and obstinance and refusal to engage in a meaningful and productive discussion with neighbors as reason for his resignation. In fact, according to his letter, Commissioner Moore graciously offered to mediate a conversation with the neighbors, and they did not take her up on that. Instead, we, the neighbors, reached out to the developers to set up a meeting, and in that meeting, the developers and their new architect intimated that this project was essentially an all-or-nothing proposal. That is a false construct. This is not all or nothing. In fact, there's a compromise staring us in the face. Last weekend, the developers told us that they have no plans to make substantive changes to address any of the actual real concerns of the neighbors. They said, "We'll have to put it up to the commission to decide." And so, here we are. I respectfully urge this commission to use your discretionary powers to enforce a reasonable compromise. With your help, we can increase housing, we can actually create profit and value for the developers, and we can preserve the neighborhood character and the rolling topography. Please reject the conditional use and variance requests and ask the developers to revise their plans. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment? If you'd like to speak, please line up on the screen side of the room. The first speaker can come forward. In the interest of time, if you want to just align yourself with other people's comments, that would be appreciated.
Sure. My name is Pankaj Agarwal, and I again want to thank you for taking your valuable time this late in the night. I support this project and the creation of housing and parking in the city. I work at a top management consulting firm in the city and find that my clients and my own company cannot hire enough qualified people in San Francisco since the rents are too high. UC Berkeley professor of economics, Enrico Moretti, who researches housing and community issues, finds that high-end technology jobs, the kind that, you know, demand good housing, have a multiplier effect of five in local service jobs. So one technology job leads to five local services, services jobs. Therefore, the city and its residents should work to create housing that will attract high-tech jobs and in turn, a multiplier of five local jobs for less affluent residents. Returning to my own experience, for those that can, that can afford the rents, they find that the stock of new or renovated housing is too small and prices get bid up too high, even if they have big pocketbooks. We need to encourage builders to add space since it may drive down and at least arrest rent increases in the city. We also need additional parking spaces, as we all know, and this project is adding two parking spaces. So San Francisco planning needs to plan for existing and future demand for housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Today is a weird day because earlier today, you spent hours listening to people tell you... you not to approve a project that really, literally didn't displace anyone. And here's a project that maybe did displace someone by someone who also maybe did displace other people. I don't know. I didn't look it up. I heard rumors about it, and I thought about looking it up, and I decided not to, because this project today isn't about what kind of landlord she was other times. This project today is about whether we should add square footage, and we should definitely add square footage. Yeah, I don't know what you guys should do about whether you should use this Commission to punish people for things they may or may not have done in other venues of their lives. I hope not, and I don't expect you to do that. Thanks. But I really don't know. I'm telling you, everything I heard tonight is the first time I heard it. Thanks.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Kemp, and I am a renter in San Francisco. I want to urge you to approve this project, and I want to urge you to approve it because I am a renter in the Bay Area. And I would like to remind you that the Bay Area, not just San Francisco, the entire Bay Area is in a regional severe housing shortage, and that's why I'm interested in this project. I have two major points I want to bring up to you. First, there are already a lot of areas around the city, especially the northern part, like Russian Hill and Pacific Heights, that already have really, really tall buildings, tall apartment buildings, next to relatively short homes that are like three or four stories tall. And, you know, there are still people that pay a lot of money to live there, so to say that their quality of life has been negatively affected by this doesn't really resonate with me. And apparently, it doesn't resonate with homebuyers in those neighborhoods either, because they still pay a lot of money to live there. And also, can you imagine if a hundred years ago, when those buildings were being built, someone had shown up and opposed having them built at all? Then, you know, flash forward to today, we'd have an extra hundreds of people who would be out of homes during a housing shortage. Let's, you know, it would have been a mistake to put people out of housing then, and it would be a mistake to do it today. My second major point is that, as a renter, and remember, most of the people in the city are renters, there is no value in living near buildings whose heights are all the same. There is no value in living somewhere where, you know, the yard is X feet large if you have to move to the Central Valley to find room for housing, because the city you wanted to live in is in a housing shortage. So as a renter, I would urge you to approve this project for those reasons. And just keep that in mind, that you have the power to help end this housing shortage. Here's one example, please help us get out of this problem. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Sapna, and I'm a new resident of San Francisco. We wanted to move to the city for a really long time, and we couldn't afford to for the longest time, and it's happened now, and I love it. You know, I really want to speak for this project. I've looked at the diagrams. I mean, I've heard a lot of comments today that it's out of sync with the neighborhood, and that they're putting lies down on paper. Heights and stories are facts that we can check, so I urge the Commission to do that. You know, I can't imagine any reasonable architect, reputable set of people would put lies down there. What this does do is create three very habitable units for families that desperately need it, and for our city that needs to grow and support the workers that are coming here to grow the economy. All of those are really important points to me. I also want to speak for my friend Jessamie. She relocated to San Francisco three years ago and spent four months bouncing back and forth trying to find a place to rent. For each property she walked into, there were twenty families, more than twenty families competing. It was emotionally rough, running credit checks, writing letters in the hope of finding a place. They ended up in Daly City, and after a year, they're in the same situation, where the landlord has them on a month-to-month lease, and they're desperately trying to buy a place. They've made multiple offers on seventy-five homes, all to no avail. There's just not enough housing options in the city and vicinity. You know, Jessamie feels very strongly that she lives in, loves, and contributes to the city of San Francisco, and living with the uncertainty over the last couple of years, and the hurdles in finding accommodation personally for her are also issues for the city. And she really urges your help in building more housing, which should take precedence over protecting, you know, views of neighbors. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Laura Clark, and I would like to say that whatever we've heard today, the neighborhood, people who oppose this project, and the developers have reached an impasse. And so it is up to you to vote yes or no on this project. And I would urge you to say yes. The developers have said that this is the project that they have determined is economically viable, and I know that that, you know, sounds like it's just about profit, but it does mean that somebody has a profit incentive to create housing in this city. That is the only way that we're going to create housing that is not a hundred percent tax subsidized. We need housing in this city. The project has been found to be within the character and scale of the neighborhood by the planning department, by the planning, the city planner, and, you know, that's what we can do. They have explored it, and they have decided that they want to approve this project. I urge you to say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Austin Hunter, and I'm here to urge you to support this project. This project is large. The residents are correct. And the reason it is large is because it could accommodate a family. So many times, we see families leave this city in Exodus, and you now have an opportunity to keep one here or allow one to come to our city. Yes, they could downsize. Yes, they could take the project back, but that would be saying no to allowing a family into their neighborhood. I think families in my neighborhood and providing that type of character to my community is what I want. As we see our schools suffer, and as we see our communities suffer, it is important that we build more housing to accommodate the influx of residents we have and create places for residents to stay. We two designed this space with a family in mind. She didn't design it to say, "Oh, I'm going to build multiple units in this one space so I can get a bunch of rent." She could make a profit off of this project if she downsizes, but it was designed to accommodate a family. If you choose to not approve this project, you're saying no to another community stakeholder. Please, please support this project.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's been a long day, so I'm going to be short. My name is Katrinan Von Rushi Zettler. For starters, this project is fifteen feet below the height limit, all right? Another thing that keeps coming back and back again is this whole thing of magic, this magical thing about shadows. All right? As I said earlier, you know, even I appear a shadow, all right? The sun, the moon, trees, plants create shadows. Shadows exist because objects are real, and they cast shadows, all right? And the notion that a building is going to limit air, that's not possible. You know, I would agree with physics. Buildings don't obstruct air. They, you know, the air is there, it's all throughout the atmosphere. It's not, the air is not going to stop. This is an opportunity for you to move forward and say yes to having more families in the city, say yes to more housing. And at some point, we cannot continue this absolute fear of saying, if a building is over forty feet, it's a scary monster. No, it's an opportunity for another family to have somewhere to live. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for being here tonight and staying late with us. My name's Brian. I'm a resident of San Francisco. I approved this project because it is, like my previous speakers said, it is a project for families. It's designed for bedrooms with the living space being up on the fourth floor, otherwise there would not be enough room for living space. As you heard before, for the Five M Project, everybody's talking about studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. I didn't hear any mention of four-bedroom apartments. Families need room to grow. San Francisco needs more four-bedroom units. There's just such a shortage of them. My sister, for example, lived on Jackson Street, and she had moved down to Redwood City to accommodate her girl and family, because she couldn't find a four-bedroom apartment. San Francisco needs to grow, and it needs to grow sustainably with all sorts of units for families large and small. It seems to me like there's a lot of guesswork in what these people think that the unit's going to entail, elevators, extra height after the fact. That's not the case. The builders have both agreed to setbacks on the back, on the side, to appease the neighbors. They're, I can personally vouch for their characters. They're not the money-grubbing, greedy people that these people would have you believe they are. They're just regular people, small business owners, just trying to get by. Like I said, this project's good for the city, it's good for the community, it's consistent with the neighborhood, and it's good for families in San Francisco.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank the Planning Commission. I also want to thank everybody here. I know a lot of you disagree with us, a lot of you may not like us right now, but what makes San Francisco great is the fact that we're willing to come out at ten o'clock at night and argue about the way our neighborhoods are shaped. And even if we may disagree, I think it's like something that's really amazing for our democracy, especially in a time when voter turnout is so low. So thank you all, even if we disagree. I want to talk about this project in particular and projects like this more broadly. First is that this project in particular displaces zero residents, has outstanding design principles, and it adds units in an already expensive neighborhood, making arguments about gentrification moot. At a time when we heard Soma howling with the pain of evictions and displacement, routing wealthy families into neighborhoods like this instead of places like Soma and the Mission should be a no-brainer. San Francisco's population's increasing massively. Should we funnel that increase into areas that will cause the least disruption to middle-class families? So here's the deal. Not only does this project only very minimally change someone's view, there are plenty of buildings that are near equal height, like the way that they've described it, is it would be three units next to twenty stories. Even if it didn't, it would be a sacrifice worth making. We live in a city, and city is a complex ecosystem of trade-offs and sacrifices. I have to balance my desire to blast Taylor Swift at all hours with my neighbor's desire to sleep. My neighbor has to balance their desire for parking with my desire for parklets. These trade-offs are deeply woven into our society, and they become especially stark and dense urban environments. But we accept those trade-offs, those negotiations, because living in a society, and living especially in a city, is great. Our closeness may generate a lot of heat, but also generates a lot of light. There's a lot of light to be found in community meetings where neighbors learn about each other. There's a lot of light to be found in the collaboration of cafes, and there's a lot of light to be found in the serendipity and encounter that can only really happen in a city. For those trade-offs to work, we have to examine all elements in negotiation and recognize when we've been neglecting one or the other. Look, I love, love pretty views. I really do. I go hiking in Yosemite to be awed by nature. I live in the sunset to be awed by the ocean. But when rents are rising over twenty percent over a year in some places in the city, when thousands are being displaced, when the very fabric of the city is being torn apart, we have to realize that we've prioritized views over housing for too long. Living in a city is an endless negotiation, but for far too long, renters have been getting not their fair share of that deal. Enough is enough. It's time to put people ahead of buildings. The second point I wanted to make is a much broader one. The fact that this tiny, tiny project that has become a political campaign speaks to the nature of how broken the system is as a whole. Every one of us acknowledges here that this process moves too slowly. And the fact that we enable neighborhood grievances to turn a simple modification of your home into a giant political battle, when you multiply that across the thousands of units the city needs to create to produce, we are discouraging housing, and we're creating a mess. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm the last speaker from Barf, so you're welcome. Like many speakers before me, I'm also very pro-development. That's why I could have been bothered to speak for Five M earlier this evening, and that's why I'm bothered to speak for ten forty-two Jackson right now. There is one thing that I would really love to preserve about San Francisco, and it's being a family city. I was born here, I was raised here, I've lived all over the city, and now live on the peninsula. And this project right here, this addition of two additional floors to create an extra unit, is perfectly sized for families like mine, who have many family members and have to cram into what little housing that we can. I don't find shadows on an alleyway or the addition of extra parking to be a worthy or legitimate excuse to block more housing in a time when we need it the most, and an area that needs it the most. This area is already dense, so this project makes sense in the local context. It's well-designed, you've seen the pictures, the projections, the elevations of this project, and it fits well with the surrounding homes. And this development right here, up to forty feet of additional height, or, I'm sorry, up to forty feet of height, period, is logical, and I might, dare I say, not as ambitious as we need to be. This small housing project shouldn't be turned into some kind of ad hominem debate attack against one person. This project, or what's before you today, the conditional use authorization and the variance, really is about approving more housing in San Francisco, and I urge your eye vote. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional public comment? Okay, not seeing any public comment, it's closed on this item. And Commissioner Moore.
Well, I'm impressed by everybody's stamina. I mean, we heard a lot for and against, and, great. I have to ask a couple of very practical questions. What is in front of us is really far more practical and far more governed by things which are perhaps harder to understand if you don't sit here every week. Let's say that very simply. I'd like to ask Mr. Topicher if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone.
Certainly.
And you talked about elements of a drawing which I do not find in my drawings here, and my question to you is, were those changes you made afterwards, I assume? Are these your drawings?
Yes, those are my drawings. We primarily worked on the packet that you have on reworking the exterior elevations to make them more, in keeping with the neighborhood, to be more sensitive to scale. We have since...
Could you answer my question, please? Is the set of drawings which is in front of me, your set of drawings, did you prepare these drawings, all of them? Plans, sections, et cetera?
I prepared a portion of those drawings. I did not prepare all of those drawings.
All of them? Because it looks to me as if those are the drawings which we had before, except for the title block.
A portion of those are, yes, correct.
So having clarified that, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. Could you explain the section drawing, which is drawing A four-one to us, please? There has been a thought that you are intending to raise the building, is that correct?
Yes. Currently, the garage driveway is quite narrow and quite steep, and the intent would be to raise the actual basement level so the ease of getting in and out would be made safer and more usable. As it is now, it's very steep and presents, I think, a hazard to getting in. And so the only way to be able to have access to that garage level is to have, raise up the floor so you have access in with the driveway.
Could you explain to me what you mean by raising the floor? You are assuming, jacking up the entire building?
So the proposal... Yes, the proposal is that the foundations are in not very good state, and that, given the amount of work that's being proposed to add one or two stories, would justify having to do significant foundation improvements that, at the same time, while the building is floating above its existing foundations as they're removed and replaced, that the building could be raised approximately twelve inches, and that would facilitate a better access from the street, from the driveway, given the narrowness and the steepness of the existing driveway grade.
I do not see an indication of twelve inches here, but the lettering is very small. My question is, if you are adding two floors, that would mean that you have to basically redesign the structure as well? Because a building as it is designed probably cannot carry two additional floors.
Correct. There has been some structural design that has taken place that I have not been involved with, was from the previous author, working with a structural engineer, and there are some moment frames and additional structure to accommodate, again, the addition of the two new floors that would take place at the lower levels and throughout the building.
Would this particular type of amendment of the building potentially be a demolition?
I do not believe so, under what is considered a demolition by the Building and Planning Code. There is significant change, but it is not a full demolition.
But you are not yet as entrenched in the design of the building to be able to answer that question?
I... Correct. Uh, I, correct.
The, the other question I have, if indeed you have taken over the project, which sometimes happens, not very often-
Yes.
-but sometimes it does, um, I'm surprised that you are showing, uh, modified floor plans and elevations, projecting them while you are, while you are asking for approvals tonight, which need to be based on drawings which are in front of us, in our hand. Are you familiar with that requirement?
Yes, I am, and I apologize, but late in the game, we've had some discussions, and the sponsors, project sponsors, have agreed to try to make this, they, they want to do a good job, they want to make this a good project, and in consideration of some of the, the comments that came from the neighborhood, they felt that they could try to make an effort, would be to have some further setbacks up on the fourth, proposed fourth level.
Well, the, the general rule, which I think this commission follows very closely, is that a project can really only be fully reviewed and approved when it is documented in drawings, which forms the basis for an approval. In addition to that, that could potentially open more positive discussions with your neighbors, particularly if it's documented in a way that people really three-dimensionally understand the building.
Sure.
What is really missing for me, and I want to make it short because we're all tired, is that the building has never really been shown in context. In context means, three-dimensionally, it shows it at least sitting amidst three buildings down, three buildings over-
Correct.
-going down the alley, but you haven't done that. It's interesting to see the elevation drawings and the other things, but it doesn't quite do it. I want to leave it with that. The building is still too massive for me, I believe it should really work within adding one additional floor, uh, or perhaps combining the second and third floor, that would be fine, but adding a fourth floor, I think, is really something I am very concerned about.
Okay.
And since, as you know, our threshold, this is not a DR, although it sounds like a DR, I don't think I have ever done this, for the entire 10 years that I've been sitting here, and I don't think Commissioner Antonini has done it. This is a CU. That means a project has to rise to be necessary and desirable, the necessary and desirable is most and foremost described by those people who live next to it. That is what the neighborhood has to tell us. And I, I mean, I appreciate your opinions about needing to densify the city and everybody else commented on it, but it's the voice of the neighbors which really has to, uh, ring with us. I appreciate your sensitivities, but there is still a step missing for this project to come forward today for me.
Commissioner Hillis.
So, I would agree with, I would agree with Commissioner Moore's comments. Um, I think it's, you're asking for too much. We've got a CU here that's adding a fourth floor, as well as a variance, that we're encroaching into the, to the rear yard of both the third and the fourth floor. I think you can get away with a, with a variance on the third floor, although I'm not the zoning administrator, um, and add a unit on the third floor. I think, though, what you're trying to do by putting your living space on the top floor and your bedroom space on the third floor, i- is you're turning this upside down, it ends up needing too much space on the fourth floor, you can't provide the appropriate setbacks. I mean, I can think of a project that could possibly work if the living space was on the third floor and had a modest increase on the fourth floor, but, but that's not this. I mean, I, I can support the third floor increase, it'd be good to hear from the, from the zoning administrator, but I think the, the fourth floor is inappropriate here and doesn't work, especially on the alley.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, just in regards to the rear yard variance, the subject lot is fairly substandard, it's 25 feet wide and only 53 feet 9 inches deep. There is a very small parcel behind it on the alley, that fronts on the alley. It's also a corner lot, so it doesn't generally contribute to mid-block open space, and the adjacent property to the east is a deeper lot, and it extends further back into the rear yard. So, I think that there are some justifications for a variance, for a rear yard variance. However, I do have concerns, like you, with the proposed project, and I don't see any need of justification for the, for the variance at the fourth floor level, um, but, you know, that's, the rest of the project would be up to you, but I certainly can find some justification for the variance at the lower levels, and this would require variance, um, not only at the third level where construction is proposed, but essentially at the first and second as well, they're doing substantial work here, that would trigger the variance at all levels, and I could be supportive of variance at the three levels, but not the variance at the fourth level.
Commissioner Johnson.
Um, thank you very much. I'll just keep it really, really short. Um, I actually was, a couple of things. Um, I was agreeing with Commissioner Moore, that I was a little bit confused today, I was actually looking at the presentation from the project sponsor, and I was skipping between what I have on my laptop, and I was trying to look at President Fong's documents, because I felt like I wasn't seeing what I had studied for today, which is problematic. Um, so, that alone is, is problematic to me, being this late at night, I'd like to be able to rely on what I've worked on for today. The other thing is, uh, I, I can be okay with the height, the additional two floors. Again, I'd have to see kind of exactly now what this building is supposed to look like. My issue is, in terms of a CU, again, that bar is a little, actually a little bit higher, I think, than a DR, right? Because a DR is just sort of like relying on whatever the person who filed a DR doesn't like about the project. A CU is a little bit of a higher bar. Um, and for me, I think it's problematic that we're taking away spaces from floors one and two, and actually making the second floor going from to a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom. We're talking about, you know, creating family homes, well, you had a family home there, it was a three-bedroom on the second floor, and now you're making it a two-bedroom, a little bit 151 or so square feet smaller, and adding a four, four-bedroom on top of it. Um, I think that that's something that definitely should be looked at, I think there's a lot of things that have been brought up by the commission today, so I'm not necessarily sure I'm prepared to go into a design studio here at 11:30 at night, um, but that seems problematic to me, and, and, taken all together, not sure that I can make a decision on this today, although I hate continuances, like, I hate asparagus, so, thank you.
Commissioner Antonini.
I, I visited the site, and I was on the roof of the adjacent building, looked down upon 1042, 1044 Jackson, and it was quite apparent that adding an additional floor would bring that building up to where it fit with the, uh, the height of the adjacent buildings and kind of conform to the slope coming down the hill. And, you know, there's some, um, some work that needs to be done seismically, and there was a little problem on the bottom, so I can see where they're going to raise it up a little, make the entrance to the garage a little better, but I kind of agree with the other commissioners that just putting two full floors on there, even though they've moved back that upper fourth floor, is going to be a little bit large, and, uh, you know, probably the, just the third floor is probably the best way to do it. Commissioner Hillis said if it was a fourth floor, you'd have to reverse the thing and maybe have a small master suite and a bathroom on that very top, which would have much less impact. So, I'm not quite sure, we probably are going to have to continue this, given the hour, and we'd have to ask project architect to come back with another version that would include a project that only had the three floors on it, and, uh, that might be the best way to do it.
Commissioner Richards.
Um, I guess zoning administrator, maybe, I know it's very, very late, just give us a little primer on the 40 feet, 65 feet, on conforming RH3.
Certainly, so, um, as you know, most RH districts are within a 40-foot height limit, however, there are some, including this, which have a higher height limit-
Right.
-under the planning code. If you're in an RH district, then you need a conditional use authorization to exceed the 40 feet. If you're in an RM district, you need a conditional use to exceed the 50 feet. And the findings that must be made are the same as normal under Section 303 for conditional use, having the necessary or desirable further. Section 253 asks that you look at kind of the general characteristics of the RH3 zoning district, and whether or not something, the project would be appropriate. And just in terms of the actions that you may seek, if it is your desire to have a three-story building, the project, I believe, denial of the conditional use would result in a three-story building, um, and would not necessarily need to come back to you. But if you would like to maybe retain some jurisdiction over the other design elements of the third story, it's, it's a little complicated because, um, they would no longer need to be before you because of the conditional use, but could potentially be bringing to you as a DR in some other form, if you'd like to see a revised, uh, third story.
Sure, sure. I mean, I appreciate the change that the project sponsor made, hearing the comments that were given, I think that's, that's a goo- good step. You know, I always kind of rail against what I call, you know, huge houses, 7,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet, when they're really, you know, per, the square footage per person is in the thousands, 2,000 square feet's not that big. We do need housing. The thing that threw me off, and I learned about this, you know, always during public commenting, it just threw me off here completely today, was the issue with the evictions and the issue with the lawsuits and all this, and, you know, I guess to the project sponsor, you know, was there a tenant in this place? What, you know, what, did you buy it? If I were to pull the, the tax records at the time you purchased it, was the rent stabilization fee being paid, was a homeowner's exemption being taken? I mean, what did we find? What, what happened?
Good evening, Commissioners. At the time we purchased the property, the upstairs unit was vacant, the downstairs unit was occupied by an older family who had been waiting for eight years to get into the city's inclusionary housing program, and we gave them support letters, as well as the old owner or the trust gave them support letters to be moved along into the city's housing program, but they had been waitlisted for eight years-
So, they got into-
Yes, they got into the city's inclusionary housing program, and, uh, you can look at the rent board records, which are public information, that there have been no evictions, either fault or no fault, um, and that was, um, that was an important consideration for us, even in purchasing the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I guess to the folks who spoke from the pro-development side, you know, words were used like, why are you punishing? Why would you even imagine taking these things into consideration? I wouldn't say it's punishing, I would say it's not rewarding. We have conflicting social policy goals here with building more housing, but we also have social policy goals around diversity and not displacement. Somebody said, we need to accommodate a family, we need to keep people here, we need to allow people to come to the city, and, and I, I don't want to appear condescending or lecturing to you, but, you know, in these cases, and I'm saying this happened in this case, if a, a family were evicted or displaced illegally, it really blows the whole argument around why you're trying to keep families here. You, you got rid of one, uh, so you make room for a new one, but what's the point? It's a wash, it's actually a bad wash, so, it, it's just something that, that, I think really, in the message that you, you, you're telling us hurts your movement, to be honest with you. I think you need to consider that in the future, because it really resonates with me that those things should be considered by you. I support a continuance, or I support whatever else the commission decides.
Can I just ask for a clarification from zoning administrator? If it's a denial, the project defaults to a three-story?
Correct. They, um, the conditional use authorization is required for the addition above 40 feet, so they could build up to 40 feet if this was denied.
And, did you say further, we could require a, a lookback, or a-
Department sponsored DR.
A, a department-sponsored DR?
Well, I mean, that, that's a question I think we'd want to discuss with the city attorney's office, because I can't recall a case like this where we've had something that the conditional use is denied, there, Section 311 was performed as part of this project.
Okay. But a denial would, would default to a three-story building?
Correct.
Okay.
Up to 40 feet.
Commissioner Wu.
I'm starting to sense there's consensus on the commission to want to see a three-story building. I would suggest that we go ahead and deny the CU to, to achieve that. I actually, I don't need to see the project again, if it's, if it's, um, if it doesn't need a CU, then we don't need to drag everyone through the mud to come through Planning Commission again.
Commissioners, just for point of clarification, there is an approval motion before you, so as much as the project wouldn't necessarily need to come back, per se, for your review, you would need to adopt or approve a motion for denial-
Right.
-in that process, so it would be a motion of intent to deny and a continuance.
Okay. I'll move for a motion of intent to deny.
Second.
Commissioner Moore.
Um, zoning administrator Sanders, I have a question for you. The Juliet balconies on the alley seem somewhat awkward to me. Aren't they hanging over a public right-of-way and require also a variance? That is just my question, because they look that way.
No, it's an excellent question, and, um, under the planning code, they are permitted, given the width of the sidewalk, they can project two feet from the building wall. Further, there must be, project no closer than eight feet to the center line of the road, and we did review that with staff earlier today, and it does appear, in those regards, to be code-compliant under Section 136.
So, they are code-compliant.
Yes.
Okay, thank you just for clarifying that, that's a taste question, I don't care, I think generally, because the project still facing, basically draws on the DNA of somebody whose work we have seen frequently, that's not any put-down from Mr. Topico took over, uh, I feel that the DNA of what is proposed in the design is quite strong, it requires modification of how you finish a building on the third floor, so I, I don't have to see it, and I'm comfortable with, with the motion.
Commissioner Johnson.
Oh, sorry, I was going to leave.
Okay.
So, um, there has been a motion that has been seconded with an intent to deny. Commissioner Wu, would you like to continue this matter to October 8th?
It's an intent to deny.
It's an intent to deny, but we should also continue the matter, so there's no requirement to notify.
And the timing is because of the time it takes to write the-
Well, staff would need to draft a motion and then include it in your packet, so-
Okay.
-October 24th is closed at this point, oh, I suppose we could, I'm sorry, we could do October 1st, I'm sorry. Okay, very good.
Commissioner Moore.
I just wanted to ask, and it's on the 1st of October.
Yeah, I apologize.
Thank you.
And Commissioners, you could also, if you so desire, and it sounds like there may not be an interest in doing it, you could request that staff bring this back to you as a staff DR for the revised project. Uh, doesn't have to be a decision tonight, but one could be made on the 1st.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, there is a motion that has been seconded with, for a motion of intent to deny the conditional use authorization, and to continue this matter to October 1st. On that motion, Commissioner Antonini-
Aye.
Commissioner Hillis, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Moore-
Aye.
Commissioner Richards-
Aye.
Commissioner Wu-
Aye.
And Commissioner President Fong.
Aye.
And so move, Commissioners, that motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Zoning Administrator, what say you?
Continue.
Close public hearing, being inclined to grant the requested variance at the third floor, only no variance granted at the fourth story.
We're going to have to continue, it's 11:33.
Guys, I want to, I want to open this discussion, if we, it's been a very long day. Uh, I think this is an item, will take more than an hour, we've got half an hour before the garage closes.
Yeah. I got two more items.
We have two more items, but I believe that the 16th, 16th Street would like to continue until, uh, at August 1st, October 1st.
October 1st.
And the 1st on the agenda.
Do you want to hear this next one?
I don't think we're going to make it, because we've got to get to the garage.
If they go to the garage, I don't think we make it.
This is, this is going to die.
I move my car.
It takes about 10 minutes, running over, bringing it back, that's what we have to do.
I think there is consensus to adjourn the meeting.
Let's do our continuance for these guys.
Yeah, we have to continue, continue to pick a date for both, um, October 1st for the 16th Street.
Um, again, October 1st, um, or the 8th are probably the soonest hearing dates that are available, um, I suppose, well, I mean, the, the mission interim controls are on next week, so, I would recommend the 1st or the 8th.
So, can, is there room for both of them on the 1st?
Uh, well, that's entirely up to you, Commissioners. Uh, you have the Housing Balance Report and the Wireless Facility Planning Code Amendment. We just continued this, I, I don't see why not.
Yeah, let's go for the 1st.
Okay, let's put them both there on the 1st, and if we need to, unfortunately, if we need to move something else.
Move to continue both Items 7 and Item 8 to October 1st.
Okay, Commissioners, we should probably take public comment on the continuances.
Yeah.
On Item 7, you already have continued Item 5 to the 15th of October. It's identical issue. The extra five feet of the zoning is being used for an extra story. If you look at your schedule, it says seven stories, 65 feet tall for seven, and if you look at the description on 5B, it's a nine-story building and 85 feet tall. Guess what? Those are the five footers. You have to have a discussion of the five footers, they're going to be a plague in the South Side market, a lot of them are dressed near the youth and family zone. I just would suggest you continue them, you already continued one to the October 15th, let's just bleed it out on October 15th about the five footers. Please, don't create, don't make yourselves and us crazy. Crazier. We're already crazy.
Mike, this is public comment on-
Right, I know that.
-our continuance, so-
Yeah, yeah, I know that.
Hi, my name's Jamie Whitaker, and I just want to, I live in the South Market District in Rincon Hill, and I think there's a- And I think there's a public integrity issue with the buildings that Ms. Hester just mentioned. There was an understanding that the five-foot bump in many area plans, not just Western Soma or Eastern Soma, I think there are other area plans, is specifically intended for use for PDR or retail ground floor.
We're really speaking to just the continuances right now, Mr. Whitaker.
Well, I would just like to second that October 15th, please pair up the 363 Sixth Street and the 1532 Harrison Street and maybe pre, just before those, in between now and then, maybe can have a hearing to talk about this five-foot bump because it's not what the community was sold.
We're only talking about the continuance right now, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Michael Yarni of Building Inc. I'm the project sponsor for item 7 and we respectfully request that the commission, I appreciate how tired you are, but that you hear the item tonight. It's been a very, very long wait. Thank you.
So, any other public comment? Commissioner Antonini.
I'm very supportive. I'm game to do anything. I'd like to hear it tonight, however, we can't get our cars out. The only thing we could do is adjourn, go move our cars to the street and then come back. And we did that once on Home Depot, but, you know, I think we're kind of worn out. And, but I would, you know, I'd love to do it tonight. I don't mind doing it, but I'd have to see where the other Commissioners are. But if we do continue it, I think the 1st, it is an issue, it has to be decided. The sooner we do it, the better because we've got a lot of important projects that involve this issue. And I prefer to see it on the 1st than to have to delay it till the 15th. So, that would be my feeling. Continue to the 1st.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
Second. Commissioner Richards.
I could hear it tonight, but I don't think we'd have a quorum.
Commissioner Moore.
I am, I don't necessarily see that the two projects need to be together. I think the issues are on their own, an issue to be thought through independently and based on what the particular conditions are of where they're being executed, one way or the other. So, I think I'd rather have this commission work a little harder and bring a certain amount of knowledge to the stipulation of the five feet and look at the two projects independently. I don't think they need to be heard together. So, I suggest that the project be continued to October 1st and then the other one comes when it does.
Great.
Commissioners, there is a motion that has been seconded to continue item 7 to October 1st. On that motion, Commissioner Antonini.
Aye.
Commissioner Hillis.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Richards.
No.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
And Commission President Fong.
Aye.
So, move, Commissioners. That motion passes six to one with Commissioner Richards voting against.
Commissioner Wu.
I just want to say to the members of the public who waited for item 8, I know many people want to speak in public comment for draft DIRs, but written comments are treated exactly the same way as verbal comments, and so just wanted to make that clear.
Continue. We continue 8. Well, we're proposing to continue item 8.
Till October 1st. That was on 7.
We've got to do another vote.
Another vote for 8, another motion.
I haven't heard a motion, yeah.
Yeah, motion.
Commissioner Richards.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Continue item 8 also to the 1st.
Second. On that motion, Commissioners, to continue item 8.
Sorry, Jonas, we need to take public comment on that, right?
Yeah. I thought we were taking public comment on the continuances, but if that wasn't clear to the public, then we should, yes. Just on the matter of continuance.
For item number 8.
8.
901 16th Street.
Good evening, Commissioners. Eileen Dick, Freella Braun and Martel, on behalf of the project sponsor for item 8, we're perfectly fine with the continuance to October 1st, but not later than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comment's closed.
Commissioners, there is a motion...
Hang on, hang on.
There is a motion that has been seconded to continue the matter to October 1st.
You want to speak, ma'am?
Yeah. I really appreciate how late you guys are here as well and the attention that you've given the project on 16th Street. I think we have a majority of people who could come on the 8th. We can't get as many people here on the 1st. I don't know if it's possible to calendar around our schedules. 15th isn't going to work.
Well, we're proposing the 1st.
Yeah, the 8th, I think, is going to work for a majority of us.
Oh, I thought you said the 15th, okay, yeah.
But whatever, whatever you need to do. Thanks.
As always, just keep it on the 1st and if we need to stretch it out further, we can do that.
Commissioners, there is a motion that has been seconded to continue item 8 to October 1st. On that motion, Commissioner Antonini.
Aye.
Commissioner Hillis.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Richards.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
And Commission President Fong.
Aye.
So, move, Commissioners. That motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Commissioners, that applies this on commission matters. Item 9, commission comments and questions. Seeing none.
I have one.
Seeing one.
Just, I will do it next week. I attended the Arts Commission meeting because I was sitting as an ex officio reporting on PDR and art space preservation, so I'll pick that up next week.
There are no other commission comments. Department matters. Item 10, director's announcements.
None today.
Public comment?
Public comment.
Is there any public comment? Seems no public comment. I just want to thank staff and Commissioners for a very long day today, controversial topics. I don't think we made everybody happy, but appreciate the service to the city.
Wow.
Christie.
Adjourn this, bad boys. Adjourn this. Adjourn this meeting. I'm going to show I'm shocked.
Meeting is adjourned.
[music]